Evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting of...
The 19th.
The 19th, September 19th. Can I ask everyone, please, to the end, if you would like to?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as a.
I'll ask the gentlemen to call a roll, please. Mayor Patrick Sullivan.
Present.
Councilman Lindeman.
Present.
And Councilman Dawson.
Here.
All present. Then I'll ask the gentlemen to read the minutes of the previous meeting.
Mayor, I will make a motion that we dispense with reading of the minutes of the September 5th meeting.
And I'll second it. Call a roll. Just for the record, the minutes that you had that I had sent you earlier, there was the, remember how I sent you a advisory today that said I was cleaning it up a little bit? What I did add was the minutes of July 11, 2024, and the August 15 minutes of 2024 were adopted, and that reflects now, and it's on the record. So Mayor Patrick Sullivan? In favor, please. Councilman Lindeman?
In favor.
And Councilman Dawson.
Favor.
Wait, okay, so we'll move into, um, gentlemen's reports. Okay, I only have a couple of small things here because we spent a lot of time the past couple of weeks working on the water issue in the city. So this is kind of a cleanup of what we talked about at our last meeting. We did go out and do the tree walk on September 10th, and we brought with us Dan Bradford, the Tree Committee. We made an extensive change, or enhancement, I should say, to the tree bid, so I extended that bid, and we're supposed to have that tonight for bid, but I gave the tree companies until the 26th of next week to go through, look at everything, and get that bid, so we will have that October 5th, I think, I'm sorry, October 3rd, our next meeting. There were two pending Sams grants to follow up with. We had a meeting with John McDonald, Senator McDonald, last week or Tuesday, when we talked with him. The only thing that needs to go out will be the pool house grant update, and that will happen this evening. I have it all written up, the time and the letter, I just didn't get a chance to get the send over. Lights at City Ball have been fixed. We do have wired a couple of lights, and we changed the GFI on that. And talking with the electrician, which is shut, they've agreed to do the upgrades to a couple of the streetlights that need to be done. To date, I know of two that are not functioning properly. We've talked to Centric, and it looks like we have to go out to get an electrician in order to do the light change up, to change up the fixture on it. If it's warranty, there'll be no cost for that, but then there'll be a cost per electrician to go out and do it. Last thing, like I said, I wanted to spend time on water. I don't know if anybody's here on that tonight to talk a little bit about it. We brought in Weston Sampson today to talk with them. Actually, they had a by-site yesterday. We talked about a couple of things. We got some old infrastructure right there at the plant, and they backed in at 27, a couple of the butterfly valves. And a butterfly valve is when you turn the valve, or the turn of the nut to close a valve, it's one that goes like this, and opens and closes this way. So it operates in this position, and when you close it, it closes this way. So that's how the idea of a butterfly, pick up a wing. The other type of valves we have, which are equally as old, is what they call the gate valve. And if you're familiar with going past our filtration plant, there's an old valve there that we replaced in the back of the plant, and that gate valve is, you have the pipe here, and next to this you have a cavity. The closure component sits in this cavity, and as you turn the knuckle, it brings that gate or plate into the pipe. So you'll see two separate things side by side. Those are what we're dealing with. We have one currently that is broken, one valve, which we believe is a butterfly valve based on the mapping that we have, and the mapping is a little outdated, and it's not updated. So in the area of the water plant, there are five valves that operate our system. When you come out of the plant and you go to water leak, our pipes go equally parallel on the south side of 155, and then one splits off halfway down, and then goes on the north side of 155. It was designed that way for redundancy, so you always have water going into both sides of the system. Redundancy in the fact that if something happens downtown, you can shuttle out the valve, you can do what you have to do. We had a cracked valve in the gravity pipe, I think it's at 287, 278, it's somewhere around those three numbers, is the address. At 278, we had a pipe that's been cracked for a couple of years, and we were actually trying to repair that valve, or that pipe. So again, two separate pipes, north side 155, south side 155. This pipe is eight foot deep, these valves are 18 feet deep. Aging, one's now broken open, we gotta repair that valve. The other pipe, what we thought, now that we have a broken valve on the one, is to bring a valve and place it where we're gonna do the repair, which brings a new valve into our system. So there's a lot of work that has to be done right at the plant itself. We have a company coming in from Connecticut to look at it because we may be doing some splicing to render these three pipes obsolete, or I'm sorry, these three valves obsolete, putting new infrastructure within our system. It's not a bad idea to go that way, that's what we're talking to Weston about, is get rid of something 1927, and put something in that's 2024. That's gonna take a long afterword run. So what had happened the other day, muddy water, dirty water, titted water, particles in your pipe. Again, gravity fed, comes down into our system in both sides, then becomes pressurized with it. By shifting over to the one side, which was Port Skyler side, mainly south side 155, feeding the 155 or the Port Skyler area, pressure was reduced a little bit, and in bringing it back up to the timeframe, what had happened was pipes lost a little water along the way, still pressurizing homes, and then all of a sudden became pressurized again. So that scaling, as you know, with aging infrastructure, pipes can get scaling on the inside, it gave it the opportunity for that scaling to then break apart and make its way into our system. Didn't change the, changed the turbidity, the turbidity again refers to cloudiness of the water, didn't change anything chemical, so we're still drinking safe drinking water along the way. But unfortunately, that's what got into our systems, that's what made its way into the water. So I think as of today, I haven't heard many complaints, I think I handled that meeting, that they're still somewhat cloudy water, but for the most part, the people we've heard from are saying they're now clear again. We've reached out to Albany County, we've alerted them as to what's going on. We have the engineer on staff now, looking at things, we're designing some things that are gonna have to be done. I know we're heading in the right direction, but we will have to do some work within the next week, so we may go backwards a little bit, have cloudy water again for a day, but we'll know more once we get that design. We plan to have any designs for the new infrastructure, hopefully Tuesday, and then later, Wednesday, and then we'll invite us to the next step forward. In the interim, what we're doing also is, is there is a connection to manans. Manans get the water from Troy, they feed manans, manans then can feed water, which we'll do there is, we won't have that problem of a reduced pressure, we'll always stay pressurized to go forward, so we should not have that problem of scaling and reducing the pipes going forward. So it's been a long couple of days over the past weeks, but I think it's infrastructure work that needs to be done, and when we have a full idea as to potential cost, we'll bring it back here before the council.
If, if, if the, whatever happens, happens to cause the water to be cloudy again, if it is, go that route, whatever, will the residents be notified before then?
Yeah, well, before.
Like a nixle phone call, or an alert, just?
Yeah, we definitely will be doing a nixle, we will be doing, you know, I think, you know, you learn things right as you go along. We learned that our nixle system wasn't, we were putting out advisories which didn't do the telephone call to each of the homes.
Oh, okay.
It's a double-edged sword, right? Fox, the price, you know, what is it, the pride roof type of thing? You need to move the system if you continually do those nixle calls. Yeah, it, it, it was something that we brought up, but we do wanna make sure that we had, because we had a discussion before, when we had the arsenal issue, about putting out the nixle.
Right.
Right away, and it wasn't put out early enough this past time, and I'd really like to be able to say, when we're doing something of that major work, just an advisory, you may experience, and I think you and I had that discussion.
And it went out, I think it went out 12 o'clock or 1 o'clock that afternoon, we realized what we were doing.
So it did go out.
Yeah.
Well, but it wasn't, honestly, and I don't want anything to say, but it wasn't honestly done until I had called Chris and said, put it out. We need to say, I apologize, what I put out was the Facebook, because that's a right of notification.
Right.
And again, it's, it's a method.
Correct.
I usually do the Facebook, and I usually do the email, like, you know, my own, but I'm also, you know, the NEXL, I think it just makes sure we get, it's just, we learned it, but I wanna make sure that that goes out.
Absolutely.
It does cost us a couple bucks, you know, to send it out, but it's well worth the effort to have it done.
Okay.
We did supply the water.
Yeah, we did, we did supply the water, thanks to our contractor, he had a contact at Decrescenti. We were able to negotiate a pretty good price as to buying some water. We could not get any delivered that night, because he couldn't get delivery guys in. So the next day, we had 10 pallets, of which 78 cases were on each pallet, 16 ounces bottles of water. We gave out a case, sometimes two, depending if they were, you know, two family homes to people, and they were invalid at that. We gave out just about four cases of water, I'm sorry, four pallets of water, so again, do the math, four times 78, that's the number that we distributed.
Can we use the pallets for something?
Yes, we can.
For the ratio?
We already talked to Chris about that. Problem we have with that is, is, you know, we try to do the water without bottles, so they're gonna use that probably at one of the tables, so people can come home and get and take that bottle of water. Yes.
And I do wanna thank Chris, Stacy, Joe, myself, who handed out the water that night. And well, I think, out of all those people that received water that night, I think, I think they mentioned one person might have been a little tasky about it, like everybody else appreciated.
Yeah, I had one, I had one person before everybody came to assist, that was, but what I found, it was a good, a good way to educate people as to precautions the next time, flushing their, you know, their hot water tanks, making sure their toilets.
Put that out on Facebook today?
Yes.
I saw that, yeah.
I put it out on Facebook, I think that's something that, you know, we should be more diligent on, I wish there was more, you know, and somebody in City Ball had a checklist that would do that, because not everybody's gonna see it, but at least remind that they have it.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Anything else?
That's it?
Okay. I have some idols, but we can wait till just before the comment, we'll go over them. Let's go into old business.
So I think, may I correct me, we're calling the public hearing for October 2nd now, and we'll do a presentation for the water disorder?
I, we can do the presentation, I, it's ready. I was at NICO this week, I'm sorry, my vacation has not been super, so I did forget to publish the public hearing notice, so we couldn't have that tonight, but we were supposed to have the presentation. Were you guys here for the presentation, for water and sewer?
I'm gonna publish it off until the next meeting, it'll still give us enough time to vote for before.
Yeah.
Okay?
I mean, I can give you the presentation if you wanna have it.
We did have a presentation.
You can, I mean, the important part is you can pass the local law on the same day that you have the public hearing.
Yes.
So however it works out, as long as you do it before November 1.
Yeah.
And you wanna give at least a week's notice of the local law, of the publication.
So for the record, the local law was handed out tonight?
Yes.
For you and the whole public hearing.
Notice of the publication.
October 3rd.
I'm sorry, October 3rd. Now, the other thing is, I had sent out an email about the, about the sewer issue, the sewer budget. Has that been discussed?
I'm sorry?
The sewer issue, the sewer budget's, I gave a, or a comment that I made about the sewer clean, the catch basin?
Catch basins.
Is that part of the, we, we, we had a presentation, you made a presentation on the sewer budget?
Yep.
And then later on, we had talked, and something else brought into my mind about, what are we doing about the cleaning of catch basins over the next, let's say, five years? And what's, what's in the budget to be able to do? If it's already in the budget that we have, then we have, I don't know what, we talked about that very briefly at that meeting, you know, at that meeting.
I think there was some funds in for this year, as well as continuing.
Okay, cool. Could somebody kind of, Joe, would you kind of mention that to find out what it is? Because what I wanna make sure is, if there's funds in it, we didn't do it this year, I don't think. We did something that we needed to do with the road paving, but that was about yet.
Correct?
Okay. So if we're gonna do, I don't know how many catch basins we have, 500, 600?
I thought we had, I think we were talking about doing that, just recently.
Yeah, I think we did, last year we did, I think it was 40 of them that were cleaned out. I know they said they have done a couple of them this year, they wanna get another 20 done this year. That was kind of a common media debate as to the hiring of a 10th person regarding doing catch basins and doing the hydrants, blowing off the hydrants, because we hadn't done that in the last two years.
So I don't remember anything about catch basins, but, okay.
Yeah, so we talked about.
Flushing.
Flushing.
We talked about flushing.
Yeah, so that's what, so yes, we'll come back with information on that for you.
Okay. And there's nothing under old business?
Nothing under old business, okay.
Right, then we'll move into new business.
As for this evening, I have Resolution 45 for 2024, and it's a resolution amending the agreement between the City of Water Lea and Weston Sampson's P E L S L A P C regarding construction inspection fees, and hereby authorizing Mayor Charles V. Patraselli to execute all documents regarding the same.
I'll make a motion out of Resolution 45.
And I will second that.
Okay, so you will remember, we brought this to the council last meeting, and it was for Weston and Sampson, and in the documentation, it showed a number of individualized fees. You had a project manager, you had a senior manager, you had certain ones as they went down, draft unit and so on. The one thing that unfortunately was left out was construction inspection. So this is amendment number one to that agreement that we did, and it's regarding the drinking water state revolving fund, which is the DWSFR grant for the water filtration improvement project. And again, it's specific to construction inspection. We estimate 1,100 hours will be done for the project at $130 per hour of construction inspection, estimating cost not to exceed $143,000. With that motion?
Mayor Patrick Sullivan?
In favor.
Councilman Lindeman?
In favor.
And Councilman Dawson.
Favor.
Resolution 46 for 2024, it's a resolution approving the paving contract with Cardinal Construction and authorizing Mayor Charles V. Patraselli to execute all documents regarding the same.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we move on Resolution number 46 for 2024.
I'll second motion.
Now, you remember, there was a last-minute correction to the resolution we did last meeting with Louiezy, getting 18th Street, and I said there was a last-minute change, we pulled this portion of it. This is the paving for the right-of-way at 705 Avenue. That is the right-of-way that comes through the parking lot at Wicket's Park. It's an easement that's already been over the property, and that's how we come through that alleyway and come through the parking lot. The reason I pulled it was, is because we had Louiezy at an estimate to pave that 2,500 square foot and do improvements to that area. We're actually gonna dig down and do a typical roadbed base, so we're gonna come in with eight inches of pressure, and then we're gonna come in with two inches of binder coat and two inches of taco, right on the easement, so when our trucks come through, we won't see it squatting and squishing like it is now. So the two bids that came in for the project was Louiezy Brothers at 22,500, again, for 2,500 square feet, and the same 2,500 square feet with the details I just mentioned, 2,500 square feet for that component from Cardinal Company is $12,083. So it's a savings between the two of $10,417. So the recommendation tonight is to approve the resolution for Cardinal Company to do the work on our right-of-way.
Call a roll. Mayor Patrick Sullivan, in favor. Councilman Lindeman?
Favor.
And Councilman Dawson.
Favor.
That concludes the evening.
Okay.
Anything? For appropriations to come?
No, not this time.
Before you came in, we were having a budget hearing on the police and fire, and then the last meeting, we ended on the water and sewer, and the next council meeting that we have will be?
DPW and Aden.
DPW and Aden, so we can hold them at 5 o'clock. Okay. It's a weightless, packing heavy use. All right, before we have the public hearing, there's a few things, Joe, I'd like to, this is a little word. Are we on track with the cultural center here, with the heating?
Yeah, so we had stands over here on, we had stands here on Tuesday. So what we're looking at doing is, we have a proposal, we're finalizing a proposal now for all heating, that's what went across on all the board here. That'll come through off the boiler system, which is currently installed. We have to upgrade the boiler system a little bit to handle the number of radiant wall mouse that we're gonna do, but in the interim, you probably remember the two ambient heating systems we had here, that had the air conditors and so on, we're going through that. What we're gonna be doing is, so we don't throw that money away, because that would actually render the system that we're designing, because of the heights of the building and this work footage, really render these useless. So we're taking these, we're putting, they're downstairs now in the basement, and what we're doing is, is we're actually gonna be hooking those up to the boiler system as well, and running ductwork through here, and right now, I think, we're gonna have, I think, six on each side, various ductwork that'll come through the floor to be supplemental heating. We'll keep that at like maybe 55 or 60, and then the radiant heat takes care of the rest of the thing while it's up and operating. So those units are probably going to be under here, so we're gonna worry about muffling and so on, but right now, our stands is going forward and giving us a final question, which hopefully we'll bring to you next meeting.
Joe, I had sent the email out, but I never got a response back about this issue with Potters. I know they're getting more and more incredible, I'm getting more and more of, of.
Yeah, we had a couple of priorities, as you know, to get rid of this thing, but it is out of this.
Well, that was, yeah, just, just.
It's out of, it's out of this.
Okay, just wanna make sure, I know I don't, you know, like, I know it's like the first week back over, we're gonna do it there, or we got, we got something.
Yes.
And I don't think it's pop up, but, you know, and, the other thing that's I said, and I can hear back from our attorney here, was the huge public hearing on the cable. What are we doing about that? One way or the other, what are we doing, how are we doing? I know there's been a lot of up and down about that issue.
Yeah, so two things on that, we certainly can do the public notice on it. We had spoken about making sure that the grocery seats definition is as expansive as So I had spoken to experts on that issue, and ultimately, just kind of sideburnered it. So we can bring that back. There should be no rush, though, quite honestly, in adopting a new franchise agreement. The old one continues until a new one is adopted, and I am a little bit concerned about kind of the push by the person who's communicating with you to hurry up and get it done.
He's, he's calling it a PSC issue, that they've been pushing in, why is there a franchise agreement? And I don't, I don't, but the problem is, I don't know anything about the franchise agreements or anything, and in that franchise agreement, to be quite honest, it's probably something way beyond the legal terms, is that exclusivity with cable, pushing Verizon out?
No, no, it does not.
So there is, there is none. I didn't think that there was, but I wanted to make sure it's a public notice, because we're, I've already been told that it's me who was keeping, you know, a cable agreement out of Verizon.
No, so if, if for instance Verizon, or whomever, wanted to start offering cable other services in the city, they would have to reach an agreement, a franchise agreement, just like I want a cable or whatever they're calling it, or something like that. But there is no exclusivity. The, the problem is, there's a big investment in going into a new area by these cable and internet companies, and it's, if they don't see the, the return, they're not gonna be able to.
Correct. It just wasn't.
But I don't, I'm a little concerned about.
The push.
Push.
Okay, I am too, you know, but I like to know when it, if it's a push, what are we pushing?
I need to get back, I mean, I had spoken to somebody as well, and I wanted to talk to that person, and kind of just come to the conclusion as to which is the appropriate person to kind of, it should be two hours worth of advice, it shouldn't be, I just want the most expansive definition.
Okay. Joe, I actually ran into Cindy today, or whatever, C D C, whatever it is, but she said that she had, I guess she had talked, or had spoken to you, I guess DOT, you were okay with coming, we're gonna be able to, did.
Yeah, so the meeting we have with DOT, we kind of changed our methodology as to, we were gonna do an all-inclusive RFQ under what they call the, there's an acronym, I forget what the acronym is, but it's all engineering firm, there's 15 of them actually vetted by DOT currently.
Right.
So, but DOT changed their methodology, which I like a lot more, because you can hire, you can hire one company to do everything, but they're now using the practice where you hire, potentially hire up to three companies, one does the construction inspection, one does program management, and the other one does the design. So that's what we're putting together, whether it be a sample document, which I now have to conserve more closely or later, and that will go out.
Now, the one, the one thing that you did tell us, was, you told the bar to, was that we can actually include in. Now, the one, the one thing that she did tell us, she told the bar too, was that we can actually include into that for program management administration.
Yes, there is, correct, but that's inside that, yes.
But for the city?
The city, correct. Yeah, we might all be on that job and so on.
Well, yeah, yeah. So that was, that was the one. We haven't heard, have you heard anything more about restaurant with Chuck?
We've been meeting every two weeks. We have a meeting scheduled for next Wednesday. And we're waiting on Nacosta now to give us enhanced, I guess we will, site design and a cost estimate going forward. Chuck is gonna take that out to get a preliminary cost estimate as to what that's gonna be. And that will also be included within the D R I application for it forward to. So we're hoping to try to get some of that money earmarked.
Now, I know this is, docs are down there.
Correct.
But they're not going in?
I'm not gonna put this link in the game. I haven't heard back from Guy.
Right, so I figured that, I figured, there's no reason to put them in now, take them out.
Everything, everything that needs to be, has been done on our side.
Okay. Nineteenth Street Light?
Michael Fifth.
Michael Fifth.
Yes, okay, I talked to Lindsay today. She's having trouble getting the temporary assignment, the temporary lighting ones. We're still trying to get into that end of September, early, middle, early October. She will have preliminary design, reaching out to City of Albany. In fact, I already did to, I forget his first meeting now, but it's divvying over, seeing all the traffic stuff. Preferably with like one single light arm. She's only been able to find, because the single light arm does four ways, and she's only been able to find just the one side. So, and that we have the room for independence. She's supposed to finalize that for me one day or Tuesday, if they move over there.
What about the status of garbage inspections?
I went out myself Monday morning, and I was in Port Scott. And I looked at twelve homes that really were ones that rose to the, to the expectancy where a fee was needed. So Port Scott, I think they're doing very, very well. I think that kind of complies a little bit with what we're hearing, that it's getting better. Paul returned today, but Scott, I'm sorry, Mike and Tom are scheduled for Tuesday, Thursday of next week.
Of next week?
Yes.
So that's the only time since we've talked was one, your only inspection?
We talked about this in our last meeting, that we're going out right? Yeah, and I'm, yes, correct.
You mentioned the D R I, we're, we're headed that.
We're, we're targeting that, that delivery date of October.
We, we've also talked about having a public forum, a public meeting on garbage, what was it, October?
October eighth.
October eighth. So we're thinking about having an October eighth meeting, again, to get public input on that. And part of this, we know some of the public input, but just to have it start out there and talk about some of the other ideas that we're considering too, or want everybody else to consider. I think I'm done. You done?
Well, I just, where are we with hiring the part-time person that will go around and take pictures of any trash issues?
We, we talked about the position, the soil solid waste inspector. We have that, but that's gonna go out with the, it's gonna go out with the M E O because we had one of our drivers give notice. So that's gonna be October one. So probably Monday for that following weekend, you're gonna see the solid waste we that Brian found from Troy. You're gonna see the M E O. And I'm contemplating right now, looking at possibly another code enforcer, part-time. So that might be the next thing to say. So we're ready to go with that. And because we talked with Carol, and Carol said we can hire, because we're putting that, that person, that solid waste inspector, under the helps program. So we'll require someone to take a test, because that was our downfall last time. Because the two people that came in for the part-time code enforcer, neither one wanted the money, but neither one had wanted to take a test.
Did you get any, well, I shouldn't say that, have you gotten many responses from that survey that went out about?
It just, yeah, it just went out. I know, the last I heard, it was probably about eighteen responses. I did not check Johnny to see where we are, but I can get an email, just send it to guys.
I was just curious, because I filled in that. Good survey.
Good. All right, anything else?
Good.
All right, you good?
Yep.
We'll go into the public comment period. Before we go into the public comment period, because Mr. Bevel's here, I wanted just everybody to remember, the last time you spoke at the public comment period, we talked about one of the homes that needed to be cleaned up on Tenth Avenue and also the unparked cars that were there. To date, we cleaned up that home on Tenth Avenue, and spruced it up. And I think we have two vehicles towed thus far. So police are looking.
Yeah, there's no order. I don't spring clear.
So...
I sent the chief out that night, actually there, or not the chief, but he sent out cars out that night. And I think they had...
I heard four tickets.
I, four tickets, I think they towed one right away.
He was up there today, he towed today.
Also, there are on Sundays, every Sunday.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, that's something we've really gotta hone in on right now, Matt, to be quite honest with you. We're gonna make sure that happens and shut it down on Sundays.
And Saturday afternoons, at seven o'clock at night.
Okay, so with that, we'll keep the public comment period. That we, the people do wanna speak into the mic, your name and address. You'll have two minutes to speak and ask the council or make any comment to the council. So we'll open up the comment period.
I don't know if I need this or not, because I'm a pretty loud guy anyway, but. Don Hogan, eleven oh four Twenty-Fourth Street. I know Matt has brought this to you guys' attention a couple of weeks ago, or maybe a month ago. We have an alley that runs behind us. It's kind of a forgotten alley because no one's really used it for years. And if you go on the twelfth end, twelfth Ave side, the one guy uses it as driveway. But I've never had an issue with him when I've had to do something. My concern, and I know it's Matt's and a few other of my neighbors, it's a safety issue because if we ever have a fire in the back of our house, nothing can get down there because it's overgrown to the backside, not towards our houses, but it's overgrown to the Glen Ave side, because we don't even know who lives over there anymore. And a lot of that's overgrown. When I first moved in, the gentleman who lived behind me, he used to take care of that. He's long deceased. So that's, and it runs all the way down the alley. That's the first concern because we can't, a fire truck could never get in there. Second concern is really a security issue. Most of us have posted signs on our fences and stuff, you know, keep out private property, things like that. I don't know if anybody ever reads any of that. But the issue is, because it's overgrown in the back, and myself, and I know Matt and a couple of my neighbors, we mow it, but we can't get to that big heavy overgrowth that's on the other side. What we do is, we clean that up because kids go through there all the time. It's dark, it's, now, we've had two episodes where people have climbed over fences and gotten into people's yards. I know Matt had an incident a couple of years ago, or a year ago. My next door neighbor had an incident during the summer. Just so happened that my wife and I were there, I knew he was away, so I kind of kept an eye on the house. And there were four kids. They got picked up on my Ring doorbell, so we turned that over to the daughter of the guy who owns the house, because they were away. She filed a police report, okay? But it's, it's a safety and security concern, that alley. It's kind of a forgotten alley because a lot of people don't use it. But when we first purchased our house and other people purchased their house, it used to be an access so that they could park their cars back there. There were some garages, there were carports. Those are all gone. Everybody has fences pretty much now, and we do try to take care of it a little bit. But I don't have the, the ability to take all that growth down. And it's quickly encroaching to get, to almost to my yard now. So my big concern is, like I said, fire truck could never get down there if I ever had a fire in the back of my house. And the second thing is, that it's, it's kind of an area that would draw somebody who wanted to do something unscrupulous, you know? So that's the issue.
So that runs from ten to twelve?
It runs from twelfth to tenth, all the way down, yep, in the back of all our houses. Matt was gracious to take pictures, so I can leave these with you guys, huh?
That's pictures, Matt?
These are pictures of the overgrowth, yes.
That's, okay.
Okay.
Matt, don't pay for that.
Matt took picture, I mean, and again, Matt or myself would be more than gracious to give you a walk through the alley. I walk down there all the time because I have to mow back there, you know?
Just out of curiosity, I know you lived there your entire life. Was that ever an access alley? It wasn't, yeah?
Yeah, I think at one time, I think it probably, some people probably put their garbage out there and the garbage truck would down there, because my wife grew up here. And she said a lot of the garbage trucks used to pick up the trash in the alleys.
When I was a kid, they did.
Yeah, but that's, that never happened since I've been here, and I've owned that house for over thirty-some years.
All the time.
So, but that's, that's our concern, you know?
They're dumping stuff back there now, too.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of crap back there, and we don't know who lives on Glen Avenue's side, but they don't take care of it here, you know? And now it's approaching on ours, you know, and it's a big issue.
Somebody dumped a half of a car of deer back there.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it, it needs to be cleaned. I think in all the time that I've lived there, one time, I think some city guys came down and mowed the lawn through there. You know, and that was like probably twenty years ago, you know? So that's my, my issue, you know, but I'm really concerned about if I ever did have a fire in the back of the house, they couldn't get to it. And secondly, I don't want a bunch of people, you know, back there doing stuff that I don't need them to have to be doing. They come in my yard, it's a whole different ballgame. It's all marked. Then, then they'd be able to write with their god, but other than that, you know, that's, that's really our issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Matt. Anyone else?
Hey, Jason. Jason Scavo, twenty-five Nineteenth, Seventh Ave, Water Fleet. If you put yourself at Second Avenue, Twenty-Fifth Street, Gus's Hot Dogs area, Stewart's, there's four crosswalk buttons, but there's no crosswalk signals itself. And I don't, I don't know why they had the buttons, but no actual lights to say to walk. You got Stewart's there, Gus's Hot Dogs, Brotherhood Park, the church. People walk to the industrial park, the school itself. Every morning, people are walking down the street to make the turn just because people aren't navigating through that intersection safely there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Have a look at that.
That's simple, like you get D L C, who's our traffic? What's that?
I think the state rule, do they take them out? Because I knew you were talking about the bunks, but all the...
Yeah, I'd have to check the city, because... The city does all the work. They don't have anything to do with it. Lights are free. If I don't close, I'm gonna...
What, or?
I'm Matt Bevel, ten sixteen Twenty-Fourth Street. I was just wondering about the street cleaners. Are they out of service still, or?
No, they've been back on.
I've been home forever, all summer, and I have not seen one go up my street. I know it's supposed to be the day after our garbage pickup. I try to keep my street clean, but I've been doing it by myself. You know, and I have not seen a street cleaner this entire summer. So, that was it.
All right, what's your address? I forgot it.
What do you, what do you want?
The address.
Ten sixteen.
You should tell us.
Ten sixteen.
Can we get D P W dot, let me take it up?
Yeah, I can figure out how to do that. Yeah.
It's easy, really tell us the marks on it.
I got cameras.
Well, it's all marked out here, so I know they came to here.
Yeah, they never come up Twenty-Fourth. I don't know why. I think I might have a bad name.
Would you be able to send me these pictures?
You can keep them.
No, I don't.
He'd need a better picture.
On, on my phone.
Can you send that?
Yeah.
Please.
Yeah, they don't show much on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they got the Clark.
Can I just, for the records? Okay, well, that'll close the public comment period, and that will be everything for tonight's agenda.
Just wanna, I just have a couple of things I wanna say again. A very nice nine eleven ceremony down at the Conjunctions with the Water Fleet House. I wanna thank everyone that participated, especially the Colonel who spoke, along with John McDonald and the C D A man, I think they did a wonderful job on that. I also wanna remind everybody that the race is Sunday, starting at nine o'clock. If you signed up volunteer, I have all that all set up for you. I haven't received your assignment yet.
Whether you're running or not.
Yeah, whether you're running or not.
Couple runners out there. Couple runners have got out there.
But the race, also on Saturday at that time, we're gonna be racing the Armenian flag. Anybody who else would like to join us? I wanna also thank Matt for helping me with some of the mumps that he planted at the bell. I took care of the bell at Hudson Shores, Hudson Shores Park. And the Deetons are watering them. I'm doing the watering at the Hudson Shores. And they look really, they look really sharp. Tomorrow at four o'clock, if you wanna join us at four o'clock, we're gonna be decorating the gazebo, the bell at Nineteenth Street, and whatever else with some, what do you call them, wall decorations. And I believe I think that is it. The next meeting will be October third. And if that's all there is, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And I'll second that.
Motion made, second. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Patricelli in favor? Councilwoman Diamond?
In favor?
And Councilman Dawes?
In favor.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for coming.
It didn't end the panel.
There you go.